So today, um, we will talk a little bit about, I guess my, my plan is generally to go through the, some of more of the, like, some of the practice that he assigned there. Um, I know, I'm sure a lot of people have already done it, but I think it's worthwhile for it to go through it just to make sure everybody understands. And also, I have not finished most of them, so I think it's, it's worthwhile for that. And so, um, especially in the recurrence section, I, I'm gonna be honest, I don't know what I'm doing that well. So hopefully, even though, you know, there might be, you know, maybe some people can help me out a little bit here. Um, and hopefully it's still a beneficial session for most people here. So yeah, I'm sorry if I'm fumbling around a little bit more in this live, uh, live stream than usual. We will see how, we will see how it goes. Um, okay, so, uh, we will start, I guess my idea is we're gonna start with some of the questions now, let me find it, where did I do those questions? Is there a question? No, okay. So I'm thinking we're gonna start with some of the asymptotic notation ones, because I can do those relatively well. And so I thought we'd just do that, just to get a little bit of, uh, get going well here. Um, and then we will, um, try to do some recursion questions. And again, recursion questions, I don't know what I'm doing very well in recursion questions, so forgive if I can't do them very well, but, uh, we will, we'll figure it out together. Um, okay, so I will begin, we don't have to do all of them in order, like, uh, cause again, I'm sure a lot of people have done a lot of these questions already. So I've done all of these questions. Um, so I guess we'll just start with, um, some of these ones from this slide here, from this, uh, asymptotic notations PowerPoint one, these questions here. Any questions or anything before we get going? Um, I see we have fifty-three people here, so, um, we might need another person to stream, is it, is someone not able to see my screen because of something? If, if anyone has issues that they can't see my screen.
Yeah, I can't see, it says the stream, the bit is full.
Okay, so if, so if someone, I don't know who, anybody could be volunteer and stream my screen.
I'm on it, one second.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that, appreciate that Cameron. Um, so yeah, you can just watch that, and then just make sure you mute me, like mute my, uh, my audio, if you're watching the other stream. Um, because that'll cause an echo. Not an echo, but that'll cause a, you'll hear it weird. There we go, we got someone, so thank you. Appreciate that. Um, okay, so, let me click here. Okay, so, uh, let's start, uh, with, uh, some of these questions. Um, let me actually open up the solutions as well, just so I have them here. And I've already done a little bit of practice, so maybe I'll open that window too. Uh, what are you guys most concerned about in this, in this, uh, for this midterm? Like, what's the chapter that is the most concerning?
All.
All?
Anything from lecture five?
Lecture five is, is which one, recursion?
Um, uh, stacks and trees and link lists, yeah.
Mathematical induction.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. So yeah, I agree, I agree for sure, I think, uh, the, um, uh, pretty much induction is the main thing that I got, I don't know how to do it, I'm gonna be honest, I have no, I don't know how to do it properly. So, uh, everything else, I, I think I have a relatively good grasp on. Um, so we'll start with a little bit of the asymptotic notation, but we don't have to spend too much on that. Um, and then we will, um, uh, we will just, um, we'll move on hopefully to recursion then, and then we can talk a little bit about link lists and stuff like that after too. But we'll see. Um, okay, so let's start with, I guess, this exercise here, let's just start with this. Prove that, uh, prove that, uh, two N plus one hundred log N is big O N. Um, which is fine, so I think the way you do this is you just say, okay, prove that this is true. So, uh, we, what that means is that two N plus one hundred log, log N is, um, uh, less than equal to, you know, C N, you know, for all, uh, N greater than N zero, right? So we just have to say that, figure out what C is in this case, right, to figure out whether this is true. And then in this case, you would just pick, um, usually what you do in situations like this, you just pick the coefficient. So you just take the sum of the coefficients over here, right? Especially if everything's positive, so if anything was negative, you just take the absolute value. So I'm just gonna pick C equals a hundred and two, right? So I'm just gonna say two N plus one hundred log N less than equal to a hundred and two. And, and I just wanna figure out what N zero is in this case. Um, so, uh, we can just try different N values, right? So if I just try N zero, I'll just try N equals, uh, three, let's say, right? Uh, then I can just try, well, actually, we should pick something that's easy to take a log of, so I'm gonna pick N equals two. Um, so let's try, you know, two times two plus one hundred log two, um, uh, less than equal to a hundred and two times two. So four plus one hundred less than equal to, um, uh, two hundred and four, which is of course true. So we see that there exists some C, so we can say it is, it is a, it is a true statement to say that there exists some C value, right? That makes this true for all N greater than, well, two in this case, right? Um, and so there we go, we have shown that this is true here. So generally, when solving these kinds of problems, oh, I should have the chat open, in case people wanna say anything, I'll have four twenty-eight chat open.
Adam?
Yes?
Log, so I, I always, log, L G of N, it's always gonna be base of two, correct?
Yes, it'll always be base of two, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll always be base of two, in this course, not in other courses, but yeah. Um, so generally in steps like this, like, if, if you know that this, this is gonna be true, right? Um, especially, it helps if you already know it's gonna be true. Um, then, you know, to pick a C value, just take the sum of the absolute values, values of all the coefficients, right? And this is generally just a good strategy. Again, the, whenever you're doing these kinds of proofs, you just need to figure out some C value and some N zero value. Um, uh, so, uh, you know, it's nothing much like that. Someone asked, I wonder how he will ask for proofs, like, there could be a question like this, and it's just multiple choice of the answer. Well, no, actually, but how do you multiple choice, yeah, how do you multiple choice, uh, something like this? Maybe...
Did he say whether there's questions where you upload answers or not?
I think there, I think there are no...
It's all like, just choosing or in, enter?
Yeah, I think, I think he said no written questions, and someone in the chat just agreed with me here, so I, I'm pretty sure he said no written questions.
I remember in the lecture, he said that, uh, like, when he was going over this, that, uh, like, a sample question for this could be like, again, like, the multiple choice and just pick the two, like, C or N values that are correct.
Um, yeah, and the other ones are not, like, there's like, yeah, okay, uh, cause there's always like multiple, I am, uh, am I recording? Yeah, I think I'm recording. I am recording, yes, thank you for checking. Um, so, yeah, there's always like, mo, like, a lot of C and N values that can solve the question, cause you're just looking for some C value and some N zero value. But yeah, I guess, I guess there could be multiple choice where some of them are incorrect, and one of them is correct. And so you just have to pick out the correct one, and you just wanna check, is it true? Like, is the inequality true for the given C and N zero values? Right, and, and so, it might be, it might be not, but that's just plugging in numbers essentially, so, nothing crazy with that.
I was doing some questions where you like, you solved, you like cancelled out the Ns, and then you had the C at the other side by itself, and then you somehow solved for C. And then, like, I, I know I had that for some questions, but then, I don't know, maybe it doesn't work for this question?
Where you have to like solve for the particular C value?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, I think, I know what you mean, I don't know if, we might have an example like that, so let me look through this again and see if there's an example like that, I know what you mean though about those kind of questions.
I think for those ones, it was trying to find like the most, like, tightest, like, bound for it, you get what I mean?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Multiple, right answers.
That makes sense, yeah.
I think that's the thing that's messing me up, is like, oh, he can tell us all the, how to prove this, but then he may just, it may not be the most tight answer, but it still is correct.
Yeah.
I don't...
Which, which does prove it still, which solves this question, doesn't have to be like the tightest of the C and the N values, but yeah.
So for, for inequalities though, I, I saw this as a technique they use in some of the practice questions. Because we have two N plus log N, um, and we know, we can just say, or I guess we know by inspection that N is the greatest power.
Yeah.
In this, um, what you could do is you could say, okay, two N plus one hundred log N is less than or equal to two N plus one hundred N.
Yeah.
Which you can turn into one term.
That's true.
Which would be less than C N.
Yeah, uh, that, that takes a little bit of pre, pre-knowledge though, right? Of like that, that, that takes a pre, like, you assume that N is greater than log N, which is a true assumption, right? But yeah, I, I don't, like, I don't know if that's too much of an assumption or not to, for the test. I mean, I guess it doesn't matter, because it's a multiple choice, so, yeah, that works too, right? That works too, what you said there. So maybe I'll just, I'll just say that quickly, what, what Cameron said there. Uh, another way to say this is to say that, okay, I know that N is greater than log N, okay, asymptotically. So I can say that, um, uh, two N plus one hundred log N is smaller than, um, uh, two N plus one hundred N, just smaller than C N, right? Um, and so, uh, well, actually, two N plus a hundred N is what I'm gonna say. Okay, and then, pretty much at this point, you can just say two N plus one hundred log N is less than a hundred and two. And, same thing really, yeah, that, that'll get, I guess that gets you the same thing as here, uh, as saying this, um, as what I did, cause I, it also gets you a hundred and two. Um, but I guess if you're, you're explicitly doing, making this assumption, but I guess it's fine, doesn't matter, there you go. Okay, someone gave a, um, uh, suggestion, okay, so it's a recursion tree question, so we will do that, but in a little bit. Uh, given T N is root N T root N plus N, find the asymptotic type bound for T N, draw the recursion tree return type bound, do not prove, you guys? Okay, it seems like a little bit of a, it seems like a tricky question, with the roots though, uh, but we'll figure, it might be okay, because you're multiplying roots together, so it's okay, but anyways. Um, let's do, uh, let's do one, I mean, I guess this is, we, we can skip the, the one there, that's, um, the, the next asymptotic bound one, we can try this one, show that the summation of this is big O N log N. So, uh, the summation here, right? I goes from one to N of log I, right? So if I just write out a couple terms, it's gonna be log, uh, one, right? Plus log two, plus log three, plus dot, 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 plus log N minus one, plus log N, right? So, um, this whole thing, right? Well, first of all, I'm just gonna note here, we have N terms here, right? We have N terms here. Um, but if I replace all of them with log Ns, right? If I replace all of them with log Ns, uh, instead of log one going up to N, well, certainly, my, what I have created there, so let me, let me just do that quickly. If I replace the whole thing, right, like this, with just a bunch of Ns, 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 Ns. Well, certainly, this will be bigger, right? This will be bigger than that. Um, and so, uh, this will be bigger than, uh, log, uh, and, and again, there's N of them here, right? N of them here, so this will be smaller than N log N. And so we have that the summation is smaller than N log N, so it's big O N log N. I thought it was an interesting question, cause it just makes you think about this, but I think that's a good, good thing to do here. It's interesting how we have to like, be a little bit creative here with how we, um, show these inequalities, but this is one way to do it. It's just to say, well, replace them all with Ns, and then they'll be doing that. What if we had omega instead of big O for this question? Show that it is, um, yes, good, that's, that's nice, um, show that the summation, da-da-da, is omega N log N, um, lower bound. Um, how would we do it for lower bound?
Uh, do you hear me?
Uh, yeah, I hear you, yeah.
I guess if it's the lower bound, like the omega, uh, the, yeah?
Yeah.
The one sign, I think we can just say, uh, the C has to be less than one, like it be half, one over four, and it's going to work.
Okay, let me, let me write that down, so you're saying that if we had the same thing, and we just wanted to show that this sum, oops, this sum, I goes from one to N of log I is greater than, uh, greater than you go to N log, uh, well, C N log N, right? So you're saying I could choose C to be, to be what again?
Half?
One half?
Yeah.
So one half?
One over two, one over two, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and so then, this is less than equal to log one plus log two plus log, um, uh, why is the, uh, well, of course, you know, plus, dot, 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 log N. Uh, why is that? One half?
Um, okay, so the way I'm thinking about is that, I still know that the summation is N log N. Is it wrong to be something which is greater than, and I still can't be sure?
Well, we know that, we know that the summation is less than N log N. N log N, right? But I can't quite say that this is N log N. And you would be right at that point to say one half N log N is less than N log N. Um, but we can't, I don't think we can necessarily say, yeah, that doesn't quite make sense.
I guess your point, cause if it was something less than the summation of log I, then it would make sense.
Yeah, yeah, if it was something less than the summation, yeah, because then you would have these right next to each other. And then they would be, yeah, and you would say one half of that is less than that. Okay, um, so, okay, let me just close this, yeah, so for if it's omega, if it was omega, um, I don't know how you show it for omega, I'm gonna be honest, if anybody has any ideas, I can go for it, but yeah, I don't know how you show it for omega. Otherwise, that's...
Are you trying to find a way?
Uh, so you say why?
Yeah.
Yeah, just curious, just curious, if this was, if this was omega, what would, what would we do? And yeah, can't prove it that it is, I don't think, yeah. Maybe we just say one times one times one? Okay, so you're saying there that, um, I can replace the sum, I goes from one to N of log I, which is equal to log one plus log two plus dot, 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 plus log N. Um, then, uh, you say just replace them all with ones, which is certainly less, which would be true, but then I think that would be showing that it's N. Because, because you see, I can say that, I can say that, you know, one plus one plus one plus dot, 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 plus one, but there's N of them, uh, is less than, wait, is that true? Is that less than log one plus log two plus log, dot, 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 plus log N? Cause log one is not bigger than one, is it?
Oh, log one is...
Yeah, 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 so let's just say lo, log two. Log base two of, log base two of two is one, so log base two of three is, okay, it's already bigger than one, so zero, one. Um, so I guess we can say that, so then, but then we're saying N is less, so our summation plus dot, 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 log N, and so we're showing that it's omega N, right? Wait, how can we prove the lower bound if we already proved the upper bound? Well, y, yeah, using different constants, and just showing, showing that something is upper bound something, doesn't really make it so you can't show lower bound something, just, uh, yeah, using a different, using a different C value, and N zero value. So I guess we showed that it is, that summation is omega N. Um, yeah, there, but not omega N log N, but that's okay. Let's just do this one, takes two seconds, show that two N plus one, two to the N plus one is big O to the N, so, two to the N plus one is less than equal to, uh, C two to the N. Um, then you just write two to the N plus one is two, two to the N, less than equal to C two to the N. And then this is obviously true for C greater than two, or greater than equal to two, um, for all N greater than zero. So, yeah, there you go. Um, after certain N values, it may not be a case, yeah, but sometimes I feel like just prove something, yeah. Um, okay, that's good. This is fine, we can just skip that one, these are just, uh, these are just like, not complicated ones. This one is also not complicated. This one is also not complicated. Uh, unless it is, no, it's not. Um, just going through some of the questions, okay, so that's, that's everything from the asymptotic notation one that I wanted to look at. Um, there was one, yeah, there was one, uh, section here on the determining complexity of code structures. I think that would be worth our time to go through, because I'm, I'm pretty sure there will be a determining complexity of code structure on the test. Um, so let's go through that quickly, let's make sure we all understand determining the complexity of code structures. And then from there, we will, um, from there, we can just, uh, move on to recurrent stuff. Um, okay, so, uh, let's just determine the complexity of these guys, right? So, um, uh, you have some sort of complexity that's not constant, whenever you have some kind of loop that's happening. So a for loop, a for loop, a while loop, and a for loop, right? These will all produce some kind of complexity that depends on N, especially, well, only when N is part of the criteria that's being checked here, right? Um, so for this one, we just say, okay, well, int I equals zero, I less than N, and, uh, I plus plus, sum equals sum minus I. So all this will happen is just, this will run N times, right? This will run N times, and so it is big O N, right? That's the worst case scenario, is that it will run, uh, in terms of N, right? That's how long it will take. Um, so similarly here, pretty much the exact same thing, it's just that our, our limiting case is now N times N or N squared. So that just means that this thing will now run N squared times, instead of just N times, and that's all that is there. Okay, now, this one is a little bit different, so, um, uh, here, we have the, uh, pretty much a similar situation, right? We have int I equals one, right? And, uh, every time we are multiplying I, right, we have some N, we have some N over here, right? Um, and every time we are multiplying I by two, right? So this will run, you know, the, the I value will go one, two, four, eight, sixteen, da-da-da-da, right? And we have to know how many times it will run, right, until it gets to, until it gets to N, because I has to be less than N, right? Um, and, uh, I don't know if I have, do I have an expl, I mean, I know, whenever you have a situation like this, where, you know, your I value is going one, one, two, four, eight, sixteen, dot, 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 N, right? Or, you know, at the ma, at the most, it's gonna be N. Um, then this is order law, uh, log base two of N, right? And the fact that this two matches with this two here. So if you were multiplying by three every time, it would be log base three of N. Yeah, I don't know if I have, yeah.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Go for it, go for it, no, I wasn't gonna say anything, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I, uh, I think L G log already means it's log base two.
Yes, 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 I just wanted to emphasize that, this, I wanted to color it, color it in, so this, this two, it goes to this two here, that's why I did it like that. Um, you can prove manually by tracking the code and doing some substitution to show it's log N. I'd love to do that, how, uh, let me think about how to do that, I never even thought of that, I'm gonna be honest, so, like, I never thought to actually do it. Um, so you can prove manually by tracking the code and doing some substitution to show, do you wanna, any, uh, show substitution slot in. So, well, I mean, essentially, you have some starting, I mean, in general, what it is, is you have some, like, sorting algorithms lives, oh, is that what you mean? We'll see, I think, I, I mean, this really seems like, okay, here, yeah, here, someone has, someone has a, has a post here, that looks good. Let's see what this is, so while A equals one, while A less than B, start, A times, uh, start, is that what it says? Okay, well, something, uh, doesn't really matter, um, and, so then this is A, A times two. So you're multiplying A by two, so at first, A is one, then A is two, two cubed, all the way to two to the K, until, um, I guess we're assuming that K, two to the K is greater than B, right? Yeah, okay, so, okay, so i- in this example here, I think I understand. So in this example here, if we track I, I, the first go around is one, and then it's two, and then it's two squared, sorry, two squared, and then it's two cubed, two to the four, dot, 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 until it's two to the K, where two to the K is greater than, uh, N, right? Two to the K is greater than that, and we wanna know how many times will this run? So at this point, I think we just say, we just solve for, um, I guess, yeah, okay, and then we just assume, let's just assume asymptotically that this N is a power of K. Okay, assume asymptotically that this N is, sorry, a power of two. So we just say, you know, N equals two to the K, and then solving for how many times this will run will be log N. Right, and you can see generally, this will be true, right? If this was just, uh, let's just say, uh, uh, M for multiplier, right? It would be M squared, M, M cubed, M to the four, M to the K, M here, it'd be log base M of N, right? So, um, uh, yeah, there you go, that makes sense why. So we're saying, you know, we're gonna stop this repeat, or this, this loop, until two to the K is bigger than N, because that's the condition that stops us. And then, let's just, let's just say asymptotically, N is an exact power of two, then let's solve for K there, uh, and we get that complexity. So it's big O log base M of N, and M is this multiplier here. Okay, um, and then this one, this doesn't depend on N, right? There's no N in here, so this is big O one, because it doesn't depend on N, there is no N value, it will just take a constant amount of time. Not a function of N. Okay, um, great, uh, let's go through, let's go through all the code structures, just because I think, uh, again, I think this will be on the test tomorrow, so I think it's worth our time. But thank you for sending this, I appreciate that. Okay, uh, of course, if anyone has any questions, I have the chat open, I have the four twenty-eight chat open, COE four twenty-eight, so.
Wait, for the constant complexity, why did you write, uh, big O one?
Uh, because this takes a constant amount of time, and so that's big O one.
Oh, that's just big O one, okay.
Right, which just means it's like C, some constant.
You wouldn't write the number of times it would, uh, iterate?
It's some constant, not a function of it.
Okay, okay, so it doesn't matter, okay.
It doesn't matter, it's some constant amount, yeah, sure, it's gonna be ten, uh, a hundred thousand, can't see how many zeros, yeah, a hundred thousand, but it's a constant, that's all that really matters, right? So big O one is the way to write that. Um, okay, uh, then we have, uh, these code blocks here. Uh, sorry, wait, so how, how would you conclude it's just log N from my way, like, from, like, from, for this question here, this while loop question? I, I would just see, I would just see that it's, yeah, it's just general trend that if you're multiplying by two, then the, if you're multiplying by two every time, and you're waiting till some final N value that you're going up to, then it's gonna be log base two of N, and if that was a three, it'd be log base three of N, and there we go. That's all it is for that. Yes, they're, they're individual, all these yellow blocks are individual, no, they're not connected, they're all separate, they're all separate, uh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, uh, let's take a look at this one, so for this, uh, int, int sum equals zero, for int I equals zero, this will run N times, and this inner loop will also run N times, right? And so, um, the complexity of this loop is N, and the complexity of this loop is N, and so together, it'll, they'll, they'll both run, so it'll be O N squared. This is the general, the general idea of this part, is that if we have nested independent loops, complexity of inner loop times the complexity of the outer loop, so N times N, right? Complexity of this loop is N, because it, it runs N times, like, this for loop will run N times, cause J goes from zero to N, right? And if it was like J goes from one to N, I, I, I think pretty sure, not just pretty sure, like, that is also, uh, time complexity of N, uh, because it doesn't matter, it's just a constant. It still depends on N, and not N squared, and not log N, it still depends on N, right? So, we have that.
And the sum wouldn't play a role into the complexity, right?
Yeah, there's no, yeah, yeah, the sum doesn't play a role into the complexity, it doesn't affect how many times we, we run the, the code. Um, okay, uh, int I equals one, J while I is less than equal to N, J equals I, while J is less than equal to, J equals one, I mean, J is like, less than equal to N. Okay, so we multiply J by two every time, so this looks a lot like big O log N here, right? That's correct, and this looks like big O N, right? Because, uh, I should be clear, just because we're just adding one every time, right? So this will run N times, and so the whole thing has a complexity of N log, because whenever you have nested loops, you just multiply the complexities together. Uh, what if the inner loop is dependent on the other one? Um, yeah, then you'll have to, let's see if there's an example like that. Um, yeah, then you'll have to, let's see if there's an example like that, uh. Yeah, maybe this one? No, it's not an example. Um, yeah, then there would be some kind of, uh, extra thing. What if the inner loop is dependent on the outer one? Or it might be the other way around. I think maybe the outer loop would be dependent on, no, that doesn't make sense. Maybe it does. You could have something in here that changes your I variable. I think that would just affect the complexity of the outer loop. Let's see if we have a question like that. We'll see from there. Um, let's go through a couple more of these. So, there we go. So we have, sorry, I don't know why it's gray. Oh, cause I took a screenshot. Um, what if there's nested loops with conditional statements? Which loop doesn't mention the complexity? I equals I times J or something ridiculous like that? Yeah, I agree. Uh, hopefully not. So what would happen? What would happen if we had, like, let's say we were here, and we had a for loop? Let me just type it, it's easier to type. So if I, what, what if the complexity was for int I equals zero? Um, you're gonna have to forgive the autocorrect. I less than, I less than N, I plus plus, and we had, um, okay, so if it was just I times equals N, or I times equals M, we know how to deal with that, it's like a log, right? That's the log situation. But if we had an inner for loop, int J equals zero, J less than N. Yeah. J plus plus, and then here we had I times equals, well, I'll say, I'll just write it actually as I equals I times J. What would the complexity of this be? I don't know, I'm, I'm thinking about it. I'm trying to, trying to think about what this would be. So, how many times will, how many times will this loop run? Uh, oh yeah, that's, that's, that's the main question. That's the, that's the tricky part. How many times will this loop run? Because zero, and then it'll go here, and you'll multiply I times zero, which is okay. It would be zero times zero, which is zero. And then you have zero times, well, it'll go up until, this will go up until I times N. Oh no, but you're multiplying, so it's like N factorial, there's gonna be factorials in here. There's gonna be factorials in here, and, well, because I'm thinking like, J will go, J will become, I is constant in this for loop. Well, not constant, but I, like, as in, like, this I is not changing, we're not incrementing I, right? I is not constant, but we're not incrementing I. We're just multiplying I by one, and then two, and then three, and then four, all the way to N. So we're multiplying, we're multiplying, um, I by N factorial, right? Cause one, two, three, four, five, da, 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 N. Um, but, past that, I don't know if I have any more insight. It would be, yeah.
I think the best way to solve these kind of complicated problems is just to like, take, take a number and actually just do it. Like, do the whole output thing and figure it out from there.
So like, choose some I, and choose, and see what J has to be? And I guess choose some N is equal to, like, five or something?
Yeah, like, choose an N, which is like, I, I guess you don't even have to choose an N, just start doing the thing, and then, uh, go all the way down to N, I guess, just predict all the way down to N.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Well, let's see, some of, a lot of people are saying it's an infinite loop, so, uh, uh, J, I times J equals zero, then I equals one, but J resets to zero. I times, oh, okay, I see. Yeah, okay, let's, let's do that though, so, okay, so initially, we have, uh, I equal to zero, right? And so then J equals zero. And then immediately we do I times equals, but so then immediately after this, I'll just say this is like, in the, in the for loop is over here, and the second for loop is over here. So then we have I times, so we just have zero, because this is gonna be zero times zero, right? And then we have zero times one, and then we have zero times two, then, which is zero, and then zero times two, which is zero. So it'll just always be zero. And then, so I is equal to zero, and then we increment I though. Okay, we increment I, so then I is now one after this, right? Well, I should be clear, after all of this first for loop, I is gonna be zero. But then we increment it, so it's gonna be one now, and we send it into this for loop, but J starts at zero. So J starts at zero, so it's just gonna be zero again. Um, and then, yeah, and then we're just gonna have like, okay, here, this is, let's see what you said here. So, yeah.
What's that? How is the J going to still be zero? Shouldn't it be one? Cause we have a J plus plus?
Uh, J plus plus, yeah, but this reset, so once I, once this for loop finishes, right? Then I go back up here, increment I and do this again, but J starts at zero.
No. Um, I don't think so.
Because we, we're declaring for int I.
Yeah.
Yeah, am I getting, am I getting confused? For int I equals zero, we're declaring this for loop. As long as, we're declaring this for loop here, right? It's gonna run with I equal to zero through this for loop, right? Then it's going to, you know, J is gonna become one, then two, then three, then four, all the way to N, right? And then we're gonna leave this for loop, and then we're gonna go back up to this for loop and increment I, right? We're gonna increment I, I is now one, and we go back here, and J goes zero, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, nine, to N.
Oh, I get you, okay, okay, I get you.
So it is an infinite loop, it is an infinite loop.
It is an infinite loop, yeah, it is an infinite loop. Now, I, I, I could say one here, and then that would cause, that would cause a little bit of problems, because then it wouldn't be an inf- infinite loop, because we'd be doing one, well, yeah, yeah, we'd be doing one times two, but, yeah. At this point, I'll see what the chat's saying. Why does I reset at zero? Well, because I resets, well, when I is zero, this will always be zero, because it doesn't matter how many times you multiply zero by something, it's always gonna be zero. But then when you increment I to one, if J were to start at zero, then you'd always be multiplying by zero at least once at the beginning, by one, by zero. Like, you'd be multiplying by zero once at the beginning of this loop, and so the whole thing would be zero again. Yeah, I doesn't reset, yeah, J resets. So here, we, if we started I equal to one, then what would happen? Um, let's see. If we started I equal, uh, uh, J equals one, I mean, sorry. So it would be zero the first run around. So we may as well just start I at one as well, because it doesn't matter. May as well just start that at one as well. So now, um, it's one, so it's one times one, one times two, one times three, one times four, uh, I'm sorry, no, 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 that's, that's wrong. One, one times one, which is one, one times two, which is two, two times three, which is three, uh, which is, which is six. Um, so we have a factorial situation happening there, right? Um, so we essentially have, you're multiplying I by N factorial. I times N factorial, and then you have I incrementing. So I guess it, my guess is that this would be big O N factorial. Because you'd get factorials in here, and it would be like, I times, so you'd have some sort of starter amount. You'd have like, I equal to two, let's say. If I was two, then it'd be two times N factorial, because J is just going from, just going from one to N, right? Multiplying all those numbers. So I think my answer's gonna be factorial. I mean, nothing can really be bigger than factorial, so it's probably right, yeah. Okay, so I'm gonna say N factorial there. Obviously, we don't have to stress too much about this question, um, uh, but I think it's like, good to just like, help us think about how we deal with the complexity of, of, of code like this. I don't know if that's the answer. Uh, I'll, I'll post on Reddit after, and see if anybody responds. Um, so shouldn't it be big O N? Um, big O N, but it doesn't run N, oh no, but doesn't run N times? Yeah, actually, hold on, maybe it would be that. Actually, N factorial doesn't actually make that much sense. The output, I, I becomes I times equals. Oh. Yeah, actually, this is a lot simpler than actually I realized, I think now. Because, so yeah, so the, the output of the, of I, like, what I is gonna be equal to by the end of this, is N factorial. But actually, the complexity of how many times, I was thinking about the wrong thing. Um, we have to think about how many times will the code run? So this will run once, this will run N times, and after all of that, you are going to have one times N factorial, right? And N factorial is, is, looking at this inequality here, right? N factorial is less than N is never true, I don't think ever, uh. Yeah, I don't think it's ever true. So this will, this header will literally run once, okay, maybe twice to check, but that's it, so constant time. And then you'll have this run N times, so it will be big O N. So I've changed my answer now to big O N. Yeah, big O N. So once again, the output will be a factorial, right? The output of I will be a factorial here, but that will instantly be bigger than that. Right? So yeah, let me, let me explain that, I'm sure that's a lot. So let me, let me, uh, paste it here again. So we just wanna ask ourselves, how many times will each of these loops run, right? Separate loops, how many times will each of these loops run? So let's say we go into the for loop once here with I equal to one, right? Then this for loop, right? We go, we go into the first for loop with I equal to one. This for loop will run N factorial times, right? Uh, will run N times, not N factorial, will run N times. Um, because J is less than N. I, after all this, I will be equal to one times N factorial. Because you're doing one times one, one, and then that answer, times two, times three, times four, times five, right? All the way to N. So I'll just say I is equal to N factorial here, right? N factorial, checking this condition for the next time that we're gonna do this outer loop, N is less, N factorial is less than N, that's never true. Right? Instantly, N factorial is bigger than N. And so here, we have this, oh yeah, is this something similar to what we're doing right now? Uh, sum plus equals, uh, no, that's okay, actually. What, what that example you have there, 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 they're just multiplying I times J to get, to get the sum. That's not actually changing what I and J are, right? I and J, like, the thing we're doing here is we're actually changing, we're setting I in the inner for loop. But anyway, so N factorial is instantly bigger than N. So this outer loop will run in constant time, it'll run once, and then this will run N times. So the whole thing is complexity N. That makes sense, big O N, well, that makes sense. Okay, good, I'm happy this makes sense now. It is interesting, a lot simpler of a solution than I expected. Now what if we did J, J times I? Um, well, I gotta try it, I gotta try it. Let's just think about it for a second, I won't spend an hour thinking about this one, but, uh, what if we did, what if we did? What if we did, uh, J, J times I? I'll, I'll write it actually how you wrote it, just because I wanna see here. So now, I is gonna be one, so then we're just setting J, multiply it by one, multiply by one, multiply by one, it'll never stop, I don't think. Oh no, but J is incrementing. So this will run N times, this will run N times when J, when I is equal to one, right? Because essentially, then you're just saying J equals J, and that's fine. When I is equal to two, it's going to be times two, so then it's gonna be, okay, okay, so it's going to be, this will run, I think, log N times when I is equal, sorry, when I is equal to two, because then you're multiplying by two every time here. So it's going to be, it'll be log base one of N. Lot, so this is, you can think about this like, log base one of N, right? So I think, the base of log, so I think the complexity, how many times that will run, is the sum. I, uh, let's just say R goes from, uh, uh, one to N of log base R of N. Right? Uh, and, uh, is that N log N? Uh, because it's going to be log base one, log base two, it's big O log N log N. I think it's big O N log N, because this is gonna be log base one of N, plus log base two of, oh no, 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 but the bases are changing. Uh, plus log base three of N, plus da, 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 plus log base N of, of N. So, well, we have N here. So if I set, if I increase the base to N, I decrease it. Why do you say it has to be big O N? Because N is greater than log N, N is greater than log N. Because outer loop is just N. Okay, okay, okay.
Like, I'm trying to say that we have at least one single N, and then there are so many different log Ns with different bases that are increasing. But still, we can add in the equations, I think it should be O N, I'm not sure.
So you're saying, yeah, so you're saying, oh, okay, okay, so this, log base N of N is one, isn't it? Yeah, and this is, okay, and, and log base one of N is N. One to the power of, no, 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 no.
No, no, the N, the N time, like, we're gonna have, I, when I is equal to one, we're gonna have the whole thing happening N times, correct?
Uh, yeah, you're right. You're right, so this doesn't actually have to be there, yeah, 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 yeah. The log base one of N is not that.
Yeah, and then N is a complexity is much greater than all the other ones. Like, cause we still have the constant, we have logarithmic, and then we have the linear logarithmic or whatever it's called, and then the linear. So I think, but I'm not sure if, um, I don't know.
So, no, no, I understand what you mean. So they're saying the complexity of this inner for loop should be N, because N is greater than the complexity of all of these, regardless of their basis. Right? Regardless of whatever base it is, the, N is gonna have a greater complexity. And then this has a complexity of N as well, so I think it shouldn't be N squared then in total, because this will run N times. Times N, N for this one. So shouldn't it be N squared? Cause this, this, this top loop has complexity N, and then we're saying this has big O N, right? Complexity big O N, so, so I think it should be N squared then.
Yeah, yeah, that's gonna make sense, yeah.
Big O N squared, okay. So I think we'll, we'll say big O N squared. Um, okay, I, it'd be nice if we could verify these answers somehow, but I think, I think it's nice to have some sort of a, you know, just we'll discuss it and we'll figure it out. Um, but hopefully this is helpful to kinda help think about these things. It's great, great suggestions. Ethan, you don't have to say just kidding to good questions, it's good, it's good. They're good questions. Um, okay, great. So we have done these ones, so let's, let's just finish a couple of these, uh, there's not, uh, actually, it was a, it was a good amount left. But let's do these, cause, you know, I think they're worth our time. Uh, let's just see, did I finish this one? Yeah, I finished this one. Oh no, did I finish this one? No, I did not. So this one, uh, no, I did do this one, didn't I? No, I didn't, I guess. What's the difference? This goes, oh, okay, okay, okay. So, uh, again, uh, is there anything, yeah, determining complexity of code structures? Sorry? Oh, no, I don't know if Simon said something like that, okay. Um, so the, uh, for int I equals one, I less than N, I plus plus, this will run N times, right? Uh, Adam, where will we post the recording? I will post it on my YouTube channel, and I will post it in, uh, tutor announcements on the server. Tutor announcements there. No problem. Um, so, uh, we have now, we have now, uh, this will run N times, okay? This is something someone said before, what happens if we have dependent loops? So this is a dependent loop, because this second loop depends on the first loop, right? We have I as part of our, uh, condition here, right? So, let me look at the answer, just to make sure I know what I'm saying. Um, so here, we have, uh, this loop will run N times, this loop, right? This loop in here, well, for I, uh, for J equals one, J is less than equal to I. So when I is equal to one, this will run once. When I is equal to two, this will run twice. When I is equal to three, this will run three times, right? So this will run one plus two plus three plus four plus da, 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 N times, right? That's how many times it will run, because I goes up to N. So it's going to be N times this, right? N times the sum of all the numbers up to N. Um, because, because this happens N times. Because, because this happens N times up here. No, 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 sorry. Is that true? No, no, that's not true. We have accounted for the fact that this happens N times already, because there's N of them here, right? And, and so, yeah, and then the sum of the first N terms is N, like Ethan just said, there, N, N plus one over two, which is big O N squared. So the whole thing is big O N squared. And that's it. Yeah, I was thinking that too. I'm thinking that too, Ethan, but the answer is N squared. And I think we already, number of rep. I think it might be N cubed. Like, that does make sense, what you're saying. I thought it was N cubed at first too, because I was gonna multiply this by N. But it's not like it happens, like.
Only one of the loops is dependent on N. Right? Not both of them.
Yeah, only one of the loops is dependent on N.
So each time, and each time I increases. The second, the nested loop would run one more time, right?
One more time. That's why I have the sum.
Goes up by one, then the loop will go one more time. So it's, it should already be accounted for.
Yeah, yeah. I, I agree with that as well. Like, I was thinking that since this happens N times. Then it's already accounting for the fact that it's N. But I, I, like, I have, I had the feeling at first, I said, oh, multiply this by N, which would make it N cubed. But yeah, so I guess, I guess, I guess it does make sense that it's N squared, just because this loop is not directly dependent on N. It is some, you know, constant amount of time, um, that keeps going up to N. Okay, there's that one. Let's try this next one. Int sum equals zero, for int I equals one, I less than N, I plus plus. Okay, so first of all, this is complexity N. Then we have J is equal to I. J is less than zero, J plus plus. So this will run I times. I think it'll be the same thing, won't it? No, it won't be the same thing. So number of repetitions, let's look at how many, uh, let's see how many repetitions we have of this inner loop here. Right? So when I equals one, right? Oh, J less than zero, well, uh, one is not, one is not less than zero, so this won't run. Yeah, so this won't, thi- this loop won't run here. So it's just gonna be a constant amount of time to do the checking. And so this whole thing is big O N. So it'll ne- it'll just never run. This, this. Uh, sorry, like, it'll check, but it'll never actually run the sum, right? Because any number I is always bigger than zero. So the whole thing is just N. I would have at first not said that, but I see why it is now. Any questions about this one? Why that's big O N?
Yeah. You know, the J is always going to be greater than zero. So you would never be able to go.
Into the loop, yeah.
Exactly. And like, so for one single iteration takes a constant amount of time, but since we're going up to N, that's why it's O N.
You multiply it, you multiply these two. Yeah. Yeah, exactly.
Okay, one more thing.
Yeah.
So when we have a dependent nested loop. Um, we have to do it the way above, like, just consider each iteration. Each full iteration by itself, and then just keep on adding up to.
I think that's right. That seems right to me, yeah. Yeah, that's a way to do it.
If it's not a nested loop, uh, I'm sorry, no, if it's not a dependent nested loop. Then you should just find the complexity of the outer, complexity of the inner, multiply and that's it.
Yeah, but if they're dependent, then you have to sort of under, try to, try to account for how many times will the dependent one run? Will the, the one that's dependent on the other one run?
Okay.
And add that altogether.
Sounds great.
Okay, uh, let's do another example. Uh, this one. Let's look at here. So this one, int N is equal to a hundred, for int I equals one, I less than N, I plus plus. So again, you know, this is of course, oh, sorry, actually. Um, so N is equal to a hundred. So a hundred, a hundred. This is all constant time. The whole thing's constant time. N is a constant. N is not a variable. So that's it. That's all thing. Let's look at the next one. The next one here. So int N do scanner object next int. So this whole beginning part doesn't matter. This is, this right here is not part of code complexity. Like, how many times will this run? This is how many times, so, so it's pretty much just scanning from the user. Um, an integer, and it's just checking, is that integer, uh, less than or equal to zero? Um, and that will run however many times it takes the user to input the right number. So there's no like code complexity there. It's, doesn't matter. This is where the code complexity is. So just assuming we have some sort of, what we get from this green section is that we have some N. N less than equal to zero. That's what we know. N is less than equal to zero. So now, um, we have, uh. Or sorry, no, 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 we know, sorry, 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 sorry. I'm, I'm misread that. Greater than zero. Greater than zero. So it repeats if N is less than equal to zero. It repeats it. But once N is greater than zero, then we leave. So now we know we have an N greater than zero. That's what we know from this. So, um, int sum equals zero, whatever, for int I equals one, I less than N, I plus plus. So this is complexity N. This is complexity N. So this whole thing is complexity O N squared. Oh, J equals I. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Um, so J equals I. So, uh, this will run, uh, one time. On, sorry, this will run N times on the first one. So, okay, th- this one will run N times, and then it will run N minus one times. And then it will run N minus two times, right? Because you just keep, I just keep going up, right? Until eventually, it will run N minus, N minus one times. Until it runs N minus N times. So, um, there are N of these in total. Each term contains an N. So it's N squared. Right? Because each term contains an N, right? And, uh, there's N of them. So N times N is N squared. And that's all thing. Uh, for the previous question, the answer would be big O N squared if a hundred was replaced by N. Let's see. Yes. Yeah, that makes sense. It would be N squared. Okay, let's look at the next one. So, uh. Uh, why is it N minus one? Like, why is this N minus one here? Is that what you mean? Or why is this N minus one? Oh, here, okay. So I mean, essentially, right? This, this is N minus zero, N minus one, N minus two. Just what, okay, I guess it starts at one. So I guess it starts here, actually, N minus one. Because it'll go, it doesn't really matter where it starts. It'll just go, you know, one less than N times, right? Because I equals one, so it'll go from I to N, right? So maybe it'll start on N, actually, N, N times. And then when I equals two, it'll go one less times. That's what I'm trying to say here. When I equals two, if you bring I up by one. It's gonna start, J is gonna start one higher up into the list. And so it's gonna go one less time, and then another less time, and then another less time, da, 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 da. Oh, I'm sorry, there should be plus, plus, da, 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 here. Plus, plus, da, da, da. Um, and so, uh, until eventually it's gonna be N, but right before that, it's N minus one. I just wanted to show it's N minus one. And then you have that. Okay, uh, let's look at the question here. So int X equals new int one hundred. So we have a variable X, which is a array of a hundred integers. Um, for int I equals zero, I less than X dot length. I plus plus, da, 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 da. This is all big O one. Just a constant. There's no variable of length, right? We just, this runs a hundred times. This loop runs a hundred times. Next one. And we have, uh, there's a good amount of other ones, so I don't know if we'll do all of them, but let's just try a couple more here. And see where we get. So. We'll just look at the addition rule one next, and then that'll probably be it. Okay. So. They go, okay. Int N, int X, new hundred integers. Sisna per tell N. Enter number of elements. Scan next int. Okay, so collect a hundred, uh, N is less than one, or N is greater than a hundred. What does this mean? So the numbers have to be less than one or greater than a hundred, and that's when it'll run. So when you're out of here, you'll know that they're.
Isn't it a do while loop though? Wouldn't it be, y- you keep, keep entering stuff until?
Yeah, 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 yeah. You keep entering stuff. So I guess we know all of the numbers are between zero and a hundred. That's what it's trying to show here. No, is that what it's trying to show here? Yeah, yeah, I think all of the numbers, all the numbers in this array are between zero and a hundred. Okay. Int sum equals zero, for int, oh. Oh, it's just, it's just N. That's the whole thing. It's just big O, it's just big O N. There you go. There's nothing else, nothing else. That, that top part doesn't matter. Doesn't.
Weird though, because it is a variable. We don't know how many times the person will enter elements.
Less than a hundred. Less than a hundred times.
But, but we don't know that it's not, we, it's not a constant. It is an invariant. Even if it's a hundred, like, we don't know what the number will be ahead of.
Well, let's just say it was a hundred, and then it's a constant. I think you could just. Because this complexity here depends on. Would, depends on user input, but the maximum it can is a hundred. That is the maximum that it can run. Not a function of, not a function of N, right? And we, we don't even know N. N is what here? N is the last entered one? The most recent entered one? Yeah, N is a constant. N must be between one and a hundred. N must be between one and a hundred. So the whole thing. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, I see why you're saying O one. So that means we're disagreeing with the solution here, but I do see why you're saying that. So the solution here says, loop one, what's loop one? This is loop one. Loop one is big O N if the loop terminates. Otherwise, its complexity cannot be determined. N is a variable, hence, loop two is big O N. That's not true though, if we're assigning N. Yeah. Oh yeah, we're not even, sorry, sorry. This doesn't run a hundred times. Sorry, I, I, I misread that. We're not, I thought this was inside there, or we're assigning some sort of XI. XI never gets assigned anything. Like, the, the int, the X array never, never gets, we never assign what it is. I mean, unless I'm, it's in front of me, I can't see it. We never, this is always nulls, or zeros, if it is initialized as zero, but.
Um, I think that's kind of irrelevant. I think we just pretend there's something in there, and we're printing it out.
Where we pretend there's something in, in this array?
Yeah, 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 in the array.
I guess so.
But I think it's big O N just because that we're, we're running the loop N times, and we don't know what N is going to be anyways.
Um, but are we running it? N is the variable that the user is inputting, right? N is that variable. N isn't like a, like, that's a constant. That's a number that the user's inputting between zero and a hundred. Right? Because N is scanner object and next int, and it has to be between zero and a hundred.
But like, it happens N times, right? Like, it happens whatever number N is.
This loop, this loop here? Yeah, this loop here happens whatever, yeah, this happens however many times N is. Okay, so I guess, okay, so I guess the conclusion is that from this code. From this code, we get some N. It's a variable, it is less than a hundred, for sure. It's less than a hundred. But anyways, it's less than a hundred, so. Well, just be, how did I get that for, because it's just, like, it's just some N. Like, we've just assigned, what I mean is just like, we've assigned N. Not that this runs N times, but I just mean from this, we get the value of N. It's just some N value, right? Between one and a hundred. And so it can't be more than a hundred, because, uh, if N was a hundred and one, right? Then it would restart the loop here, cuz N is great, a hundred and one is greater than a hundred, so it would ask you to reput the thing. So what if the user kept entering one thousand, then this would run as many times as the user input one thousand? So N has to be maximum one hundred, between one and a hundred. Yeah, so the complexity, the complexity of this is not N, but we get some N value out of it. After, after the person's done. Yeah, sorry, you were gonna say something?
No, for the do loop, uh, what was the complexity?
Uh, in the answer, uh. Uh, the complexity is N if it terminates, otherwise it cannot be determined. So if you keep entering a thousand, then it, you can't determine the complexity.
Yeah, yeah, makes sense.
Right? But if we do enter, let's say, but that, that doesn't make sense to say it's N. Like, what if I just enter five? If I just enter five, that while loop will run once. That's not a function of N. Doesn't run five times. Or whatever, it doesn't run N times. I, it feels like this, the complexity of this is just constant. It should just be big O one, big O one. Because. I don't think user dependent info like this can be considered. I agree to say that the user dependent info cannot be considered, but it actually says in the solution, loop one is big O N. If it terminates. Otherwise, it cannot be determined. You can't get the first complexity because you're using by the user input and not bad. Yeah, yeah. Like, I agree with what you're saying, but it, it does, it does have it in the thing here. It says, loop one is big O N if the loop terminates, otherwise it cannot be determined. You know, it's getting crazy when Discord said several people typing instead of just the names. I think they mean the whole thing is big O one if it terminates. That makes sense to say it's big O one if it terminates. Yeah, I, yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I don't agree that it's big O N. I don't, I don't, I can't explain to you why it's big O N. Yeah, I, I think it's called, uh, big O one. I think it's big O one. Um, and then, and then this runs N times. And so the whole thing has complexity N. Well, N, uh, I goes from zero to N. N is always a specific value, right? But it's just, will run N times. It is some specific value. Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. It's not asymptotic. It is less than a hundred. That's something that's bugging me too. It's like, we know it's less than a hundred. So. Since we know it's less than a hundred, it feels like this should just, we should just call this constant time too, and we just say the whole thing is constant time. It really feels like the whole thing should be constant time. Yeah. Yeah. I, it feels like the whole.
But the hundred, it doesn't have anything to do with the number of times looping, right?
It doesn't have anything to do with the number of times looping. It has, it has to do with the number of times this for loop will loop though, because maximum one hundred times. And can max, at maximum be one hundred.
Oh, yeah.
Right? So it does affect, it does affect how many times this will loop. I say we move on. Let's, let's just move on. Um, let's do, oh, Siri started talking. Let's, let's move on. Let's do, there's another rule. I just wanna go through like all the rules. Uh, the second loop can't be big O one. Let's say the user inputs five, then the loop will run five times. Like, yeah, that makes sense, and that is a function of N. But like asymptotically, asymptotically, we say, like, as N goes to infinity. And doesn't go to infinity, N goes to a hundred. That is the maximum N can be. That's the thing. If, if this condition wasn't there, I would say this is big O N, absolutely. But the condition that N is at maximum a hundred makes me feel like it should be, uh, not one hundred, not, not big O N. It should be big O one, but it's just a constant. Uh, okay, let's, let's, uh, let's. Uh, okay, let's, let's, uh, let's. Let's move on, I'd say, we have a lot of other things to do. So let's do a couple more just to get the rules, all the rules down, let's see how many more rules are there, one. Uh, good amount of other rules. So, I think, uh.
Wait, sorry, 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 Adam, I just realized something, can you scroll up for a second?
Yeah.
In this one, it says N is greater than hundred, so N could be anything.
That's when, that's when it repeats. It repeats if N is greater than a hundred, that's when it asks for another user input. Right, if N is less than one, or N is greater than a hundred, then the while loop will repeat. And it'll ask for a new user input until, um, the.
Oh, okay, my bad.
And value is neither, yeah, so it's gonna be bounded by one or not.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no problem, no fun, no fun, it's all good. Yeah.
Say something quick.
Yeah, of course, of course.
So. Whenever the, the user has an input which is less than one or greater than a hundred, it's going to keep on taking an input?
Yes.
And that's why you said it's an order N?
Uh, no, no, I, I didn't say this, I don't think this is order N, this is order however many times it takes the user to input. Right? Which is not a function of N, it's just, N is not even a variable at this point, like, N is what you're assigning the number to. Right? N is like the variable we get out of this, right?
Correct, yeah.
Right? So if this is just, you can't determine it, it's just like however long the user takes to input a number between one and a hundred.
That makes sense. And what if they do actually input something, then it's still going to be oh, one?
Uh, yeah, if they input something, then it takes one try, right? Then it's constant, it's just like, it's just that, you just do it, it just goes once.
Correct, but for the for loop, shouldn't it happen like from I equal zero to N?
Yeah, okay, so then you're saying this should be N here, you're saying this should be big O N?
Yes, if we reach to the second one.
Yeah, if we reach the second one, the, the reason, like, that makes sense. The reason I'm a little iffy on that is because N has to be less than a hundred. Right? N is not like, N is not some N random big number. N has to be between one and a hundred. So let's just pretend, let's just say worst case scenario, it's a hundred, and then it's constant time. Like, that's the longest this will take to run, is if that's one hundred and it's constant time. The longest it will take to run is one. Is, is big O one.
Okay.
Do you see what I mean by that?
Yes.
Like, that's the worst case scenario, is that N is a hundred, and that's still constant.
Yeah, cuz as soon as you get into the while loop, it's just going to happen once, cuz you already assured whatever's in the do. And the, like, do part. I already took an input and it's between one to one hundred. So as soon as it gets into the while, just, uh, it, the whole thing happens once and that's it.
Yeah, like, as soon, as soon as we enter something that is, yeah, yeah, as soon as we enter an N value between one and a hundred. Then this will just run that one time, and then it will leave it. And then now we're here, not inside the while, the while loop is like this, the do while is like this part up here. But then we have here is, this loop here is gonna run N times, but N is maximum one hundred, so. Seems like it's constant to me. Right, that's the, that's the idea of that one.
Okay, and one last thing. Um, so when we say N is equal to scanner object dot next int. This is like whatever I'm inputting is being stored in N. So how is N exactly a value?
Uh, how is N, like, what do you mean, how is N a value? Like, how is N, uh, like, like a input?
So, like. Whatever we just have as the next int, it takes whatever integers it's, and stores it in N.
In N, yeah.
So.
So how I think about it is that below, above this, above this line, it's just about getting N. Right, getting some N value. Right? And then below this line, we have some fixed N value below this line, right, some fixed N value. Um, but, you know, more specifically, like, if that, if that's all we knew, that if this whole section wasn't there, then I would say this is big O N. But because specifically this part, that we know N can only be as, you know, it can only be ninety-nine, actually. Right? Then, oh, no, no, it can be, it can be a hundred, but, uh, we know it can only be that high. It must just be, this runs a constant amount of time, because it runs at worst one hundred times. That's the idea. Does that make sense what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, let's try, let's try this one. What do you guys wanna do? Would you like to keep doing, um, this for another? You know, fifteen, twenty minutes, something like that? Or would you like to start doing recurrences? Like recurrent stuff, and like, uh. Yeah. That's what I mean, recur, recur. So there are, okay, do this example, move on, I guess, that might be a good one. Um, yeah. That might be a good idea, just do this example and move on. Uh, there's a lot of other rules, so I'd recommend looking through the rules, of course, before tomorrow. Uh, I'll add them to my notes, I don't actually have them properly in my notes, so. Um, let's just do this example quickly, big O S, so if you have a bunch of statements, use the addition rule. So, um, you just take the maximum of the whole thing, so this is big O N squared. This is big O, big O N, so the maximum is gonna be N squared, so the whole thing's N squared. So, yeah, there. So whenever you have completely separate code chunks. Uh, when, you know, uh, uh, you just want to take the maximum. Makes sense. Oops. Yes, it's moving. When it's not nested, yeah, that's what I mean by completely separate, yeah, when it's not nested, you just take the maximum of it. Okay, guys, let's try, um, let's try some recurrence. Uh, can't promise anything of how good I'm gonna be able to do this. Um, but let's try our best. Um, so the difference is that there are statements between the for loops. Yeah, and, and the difference is that a for loop is not within another for loop. They're separate from each other. Right, they're just separate blocks of code. And so the complexity of the whole thing will be N squared. Okay, uh, let's try, let's try this, use mathematical induction to prove this, let's see how it goes. I mean, this is not something crazy, like, this, this isn't too bad. Um, so we show, first of all, we show a base case. Right? So I'm gonna choose N is equal to one. Right? Um, and then it's gonna be the sum. R goes from one to one of R, well, that's of course just gonna be one. And so, uh, let's just check if that matches with our formula, right? This should. Uh, I don't know, does this equal to, I'll put a little question mark like, is this equal to one times one plus one over two? Yes, it is. So, base case, successful. Cuz two over two is one. Um, so now we make our, um, inductive. Inductive hypothesis. Hypothesis. Okay. So the inductive hypothesis is we assume that this is true for some, um, uh. For some N equal to K, right? We assume that this is true, that it's, it's true that the sum, R goes from one to K, uh, of R, is equal to, um. Uh, K. K, K plus one. Over two, we assume this is true. And we imply from this, we see if we can show that this is also true for N equal to K plus one, and this is called the, uh. In, in. In, uh, what's the word? Inductive. Uh, I forget the word, some inductive step, I'll call it inductive step. Uh, inductive step. How do I know what the base case is? Um. Uh, well, well, it can't be anything lower, you just want to choose a low value for N. Um, so, like, some sort of, like, something, you want to choose a, a case that's like, almost trivially true. Like, not just almost, is trivially true. So, for example, the sum of one is one, right? So you would just set N equal to one, you could set N equal to zero. Um, well, you can't actually set N equal to zero, because then R goes from one to zero, that doesn't make sense. Right? Uh, you can't choose zero, you could choose two, if you wanted to choose two, but, well, there's no need to choose two, so. Inductive step. We show now, show. That the following is true, that the sum. R goes from one to K plus one of R is equal to K plus one. K plus two over two, well, K plus one plus one over two. Um, which, which I'll just write as K plus two. Okay. So, um. In doing this, we need to show that this is true using, uh, this. Using the fact that we know that this is true. Um, so the way we do this, I'm gonna try to remember how we did this. Um, let me look at my notes again, I have, I have it written down. How I did it before. So let me find it. Here it is. So. Oh, yeah, 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 okay. K plus one, K plus two, okay. So. The way we do this. Is we say that this, this, the sum, uh, this sum, is equal to the sum. R goes from one to K of R plus K plus one. Right? Plus K plus one. That's a, that's because it's the sum of the first K elements, I, I mean, using just up to K. And then you just have K plus one being substituted in here one more time at the end. Right? Um, so then at this point, we know that that is equal to K, K plus one over two. Plus K plus one, and at this point, we just have to show that this is equal to this. Right, so we just say, uh, K, K plus one plus two. K plus one, I'm sorry, my K's are horrible, but. Probably read it. K squared plus K plus two K plus two. Over two. K squared plus three K plus two over two. Um, and there's, that factors into K plus one. K plus two over two. And there we go. So we showed that this is equal to this by using this. So you have to use your inductive hypothesis, because this has to imply the result that we're trying to show. So we showed this by taking, by saying this is equal to this, right? And then just rearranging that into that. Okay. One success. One induction success here. Any questions about how we did induction on this one? Sadly, I think this is the simplest example, and it's, it's, it's not, it's not super easy, but. Okay.
Uh, could you just scroll up for a second?
Yeah. A little higher, is that good?
Uh, yeah, I just need to see, it's a bit lower? Yeah, that's good, thank you.
What's the thought process behind the step for adding the K plus one term to prove? Well, I need to get this, I need to get, somehow I need to be able to use this expression. So either I have to turn this side into something like this, which, which I actually could do, but that's a little harder, not just a little, that's quite a bit harder to do. Right? Like, I could start manipulating this, right? I could foil this and get this side, right? And then use this, or I could try to turn the, this side into this, or try, sorry, try to represent this side using this side. Right? And that's a little bit easier to do compared to this. Well, I mean, it's easier to do once you know how to do it. But, um. You know, if this is on a test, what I'm saying is that you could also just like foil this, this would just be, uh, K squared plus three K plus two. Then you could say, okay, well, K, uh, over two, obviously, and you could say K squared plus. K, uh, K squared plus. K plus two K plus two, you could say, okay, this is what it's gonna be. The reason I would try to do this is because I wanna, I wanna, um, factor a K out of this. So that, what I'm showing you right now is a way to do it without having to make this assumption. So you, you do this right here, you, you, you go from this, foil it, then from this here, this step here, you're gonna go. K, K plus one plus two K plus two, or you don't have to factor the two out there. Uh, so just two K plus two like that. Uh, over two, and the reason you want to do this is because, look, now. Over two plus two K plus two. Now, you have this expression, and so you can say. That, um, uh, oh, then you're kind of back at the start. Uh, so then, then you, you have this expression, so then you can substitute that in, you can make this assumption that this is the sum. Uh, R goes from one to K of R plus two, oh, sorry, that's supposed to be over two here. Two, but I'll just divide by two, so it's K plus one here. Um, and then you'd have to recognize this again to make this equal to the sum. So you can avoid it, I thought you could avoid it, you cannot avoid it. So you have to recognize that this, this is equal to the sum, and then you've proved it inductively again. But, but not, not without avoiding this, so it looks like you do have to use this term. Yeah. Um, question, yeah.
So this, like, made it more clear? But when it, like, for, for instance, we had a question in like one of the lectures, and it was using the merge sort. And then you use the base case as two instead of one. You know why? Like, this is, like, this is completely different from this question.
Yeah, I have to see the question, we can do the question, we can try the question. Uh, yeah, what lecture was it from?
Hmm, six, five, let me check.
Okay, so, yeah, take a second, find the, find the question there. And then we'll do it, how about, in the meantime, let's just do a quick recursive tree, and then, and then, yeah, when, uh, when, uh. When you're done there, we'll do that. Like, tell, tell me when you found the, the exact question. Um. So let's do this recursive tree here, find the height of the tree for N is equal to two to the power of I, so we're assuming N is some big power of I. Um, uh, any more information on this, don't I? Okay, I technically need more information on this, but, um, we're just gonna assume that T of one is the base case, and T of one is equal to. Well, whatever, T of one is the base case. Um. So, uh. The way you do this is just to find the height, you just want to know how far down we go, so every time it's T of N over two to the zero. Uh, N over two to the one, to the two, so, you know, let's say this, this goes I times, we want to find I, right? Or I can't use I, sorry, I can't use I. Um, so let's say this goes K, K times, and I want to find K. Right? So I'm gonna say that, um. Uh, K occurs, so this is, um, this is, uh. Zero, one, two, right? So this is the, uh. One, yeah, so then, in general, this is N over two to the K. Right? That's what's gonna be, well, it's gonna be T of N over two to the K. We want to know when is that the base case? So when is N over two to the K equal to one? Right? In other words, when, that's a K there, by the way. When is N equal to two to the K? Or, which is when K is equal to log, log. And so there we go.
Did you just assume T of one?
Yes, I did just assume T of one is the base case. He did then, he did that in the, in the solution too, so. It, it, it's not explicitly stated anywhere, but, but. That must be what they did. Um, uh, there's something in the chat here. Oh, since. Probably meant squared, what is the answer to this question? Square, I don't have say it's in this. This, in this here. Um. So what is the, what is the answer for this question? Uh, this question here, question two, uh, log N. That's the height. Oh, I didn't assume, oh, N equals two to the I, sorry, N equals two to the I, so I can say K. N equals two, I didn't use that at all, so shouldn't the height be I then? Yeah. Yeah. Um. Yeah, hold on, let me check the. I equals log N, no, they said I equals log N. N equals two to the I, yeah, I didn't use that. And honestly, he didn't use that in the solution either. Um. Yeah, yeah, like, that makes sense what you're saying, Ethan. But. But that's not the height, like, I is not the height, it asked for find the height of the tree, which, which is log N. For N equals two to the I, okay, then it's equal to I. But that's not the solution, the, the solution is I equals log N, I just labeled it differently. Um, so here they're saying it goes. Um so here they're saying it goes I times, so it's gonna be two to the I. And so then it's gonna be two to the I, and so then it's gonna be two to the I, and so then it's gonna be I. That's all it is. It just I just labeled it differently. Log N, log N is the height. Log N is the height. That's what the height is. Uh but generally, how these questions work, it's just a label, it's just how we labeled it, it's just being confusing. Just how these questions work is you just um find the uh pattern. In the argument. In terms. Of the number of recursive calls. Uh set that. Equal to the argument of the base case. So the argument of the base case is one, so you just said that. But isn't log N equal to I, or is that incorrect? Log N is equal to I. Yes, log N is equal to I. The height is log N. The height is log N. If you set log N equal to I, you just have I equals I. Which is helpful. Are recursive trees like a more organized way of doing repeated substitution? Uh uh repeated substit. Well, they're essentially just a more organized way of figuring out the complex, the the cost of each recursive call. So yeah, I guess so. Doing repeated substitution. Yeah. But log.
I had a quick question?
Yeah, yeah, go for it.
So what is the base case actually referring to?
Just when does the recursive call stop?
Oh, okay.
Cause this is gonna be N over four, N over eight, N over sixteen, and it's gonna stop some point, right? So. So I think saying that N equals two to the I, N equals two the I. Is just saying that N is gonna be a power of two. So these are all gonna be whole numbers in here. These are all gonna be whole numbers in here. Okay, like this, it doesn't matter that we're dividing by two here, like it's gonna be a whole number. Okay, cause N is a power of two. Um and. Honestly. Height just means, so like this, these recursive calls are gonna keep calling, keep calling. This is gonna have two. This is gonna have two, this is gonna have two, this is gonna have two. They're gonna have two, they're gonna have two, they're gonna have two, they're gonna. We're just looking at how many layers deep are you going? And so I'm just gonna say it's gonna end after I iterations, right? It's gonna end after I iterations. And it's gonna stop when the argument. Inside here is the base case, right? When N over two the I. Because this is N over, N over two to the zero, N over two to the one, N over two to the two, N over two to the I in general. We wouldn't stop when that is equal to one, cause one is the base case. I think the height is supposed to be in terms of N. Yeah, that's why we can't use that. Yes, the height is supposed to be in terms of N. That's merge sort, uh I don't know. Is it merge sort? Yeah, that's Sam. Uh, it looks like merge sort. Yeah, looks like merge sort. Okay, it's okay. Base case is not given, but he assumes it in the question. So I'm gonna assume it to to you. That's the base case. Yeah, base case is not given, which I'm sure it is given in the test. But in the solution, he also assumes the base case is one, so I'm gonna assume the base case. Okay, merge is N log N though? Merge is N log N. Yeah, yeah. And so merge is N log N because, well, we don't know enough about this to say this, but. Like, we don't know this is merge sort, because we don't know what the what the non recursive cost is. But assuming the non recursive cost is linear, right? So then we have N, 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 and each row has a cost of N. And so it's gonna be a cost of N, well, C N, C N, C N. And how many of them are there? There's log N of them. So in total, the cost is N log N. That's assuming the non recursive cost is N. But we don't actually know that. That's not even what the question was asking for, right? Um but yeah, if this is merge sort, then the non recursive cost is N, linear, and so then the whole thing will be unlocked. Okay, let's try this question. We won't go for too much longer, guys, cause it is getting late, but. Let's let's try a couple more. Let's just see what's if we can figure it out. And then I I'd like, so let's try number four and number five. Number five is an induction one that I do not know how to do, so. Uh let's let's try number four. I think I I know how to do this one. Um use recursive tree to guess the tight big O complexity of the following recurrence formula, T N three. Okay. So first of all, the base case is T of one equals one. That's the base case. Second of all, our non recursive part is just N. So if I start, um if I start the. Tree here, let me make sure I'm doing the right thing. Uh yeah. I started the tree here. We have our first call, which is T of N, right? That's our first call at the beginning of the tree. Then from that, we are going to have three calls to T of N over two. T of N over two. T of N. Over two. And what we do, once we make that call, we replace the original call with the non recursive part. And then we do it again. This will be T of N over four now, but I'll just call it two squared. Right? N over four, cause N over two is now what you're putting into it. And N over two over two is N over four. But we're gonna have three of these as well, the exact same thing. So T N over two squared. T N over two squared. And then the same thing here, let's just go instead of doing it a bunch of times, it's just. No, why did you do that? Why did you do that one note? There we go. So just uh. It's gonna get a little messy if I do that, so I'll put that one there. And then uh and then one, two, three, same thing, right? Uh T blah blah blah, T blah blah blah, T blah blah. The same thing as we have before. And this will continue. This will have three, 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 and this will have three. Okay, it'll keep going. So we gotta just understand what the cost complexity is. The cost of this row is N, right? Oh, sorry, I was supposed to replace it. So the cost, now I put the um, I replace the call with the actual non recursive cost. So this is N over two. Right? N over two. N over two, non recursive cost. N over four. 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 N over four, and over four, and and over four. Yeah, honestly, I I I have not studied the master method, cause I he's not being tested on it, so I I was just like. I will learn it myself later, but I can't do it at this moment. Um possibly, if someone has done the master method, then uh. Feel free to say something there. Uh the cost of this is N, the cost of this row is three N over two. The cost of this next row is nine N over four. And so, you know, not too much to see a pattern, but you know, this is where K equals one, this is where K equal uh. Sorry, this is where K equals zero, this is where K equals one, this is where K equals two, right? K is the depth that we're in, right? The depth that we're into this um. The recursive calls. So. Uh this will happen uh. N is N, whatever. Uh okay, actually, N is three over two to the power zero times N. This is three over two to the power of one times N. This is three over two to the power of two times N. So after K calls, it's going to be three over two to the power of K times N. Right? And then you take the sum of all of these, right? You take the sum of all of these. And so we're doing the sum. R goes from uh zero to something, I don't, I haven't decided that yet. Of, or I'll say K, I guess. K goes from zero to some upper bound. I haven't said, I don't know how many, I don't, I have no idea how many um. Rows there are yet. I'm gonna do that in a second. That's what's gonna be the upper bound here on the sum, is how many rows we're gonna have. But what we're gonna be summing is three over two to the K times N. So now. That upper bound, right? Let's figure out what that, sorry, yeah, what that upper bound is here, right? How many layers we're gonna go? Well. The inside of the call, right? The argument, like the argument here would be T of N over eight, right? Two to the power of three for K equal to three. The argument of each call is N over two to the K, right? N over two to the K. That's what the argument of each call. This will stop, this depth, you know, this recurrence calling will stop when that argument is one. So I wanna know, when is N over two to the K equal to one? So when is N equal to two to the K? This is when K equals log. Seems to be always the answer is what K equals log. So there are log N layers here. So that's my upper bound here, log N, right? That's my upper bound. Okay, so that is the cost of doing this whole thing. Now we have to figure out what order of complexity this is, right? Well, is that what I asked for? Yeah, yeah, to guess the tight O complexity. So we have to figure out what kind of complexity this is. Uh this is the part where I think I. May have made a mistake while doing this. Question, yeah, I think it's.
The geometric see uh series. Cause we had a similar one in the session and like the lecture and.
Yeah.
It was like five over, like the ratio was five over four, but it kept on increasing, cause we can rewrite this whole thing as in. N multiplied by one plus. Three over two plus three over two squared plus three over two cubed. And it goes N until three over two. Does that make sense?
Sorry, say it goes until, sorry, can you say it again?
I'll say it again, no. So let's say, right, N multiplied by.
Three over two. Or N.
Multiplied like open, open, close parentheses, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, yeah. One.
One plus.
Three over two.
Plus T over two squared. We can go up exactly.
Okay. Plus da, 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 plus uh three over two. To the to the N or to the log N? The upper bound, upper bound is log N.
Adam, you can look at the slide I sent on the chat. That that's like the exact same thing.
Okay, it's I think it's exactly what uh man here is talking about. Yeah.
Yeah, but yeah, but the the exactly, that's the question I'm talking about, yeah.
Yeah.
So the order would just be N, I guess. At the end.
The order would just be N, but that's actually, is that the answer? That's not the answer in the thing here. Uh is that, it's hard to. Like I I can't really make sense of he, his solutions are mostly just a bunch of words writing everywhere. I don't really, like, can someone understand what the final answer is from this? Is he saying that the answer is N log N? Is that what that is? This is the solution, this is the entirety of the solution. Okay, there's one little sketch before. Is he saying? I think he's saying, so this is the sum I got, that's the same sum I got, uh I equals zero, yeah, I equals zero. Uh and I guess he's saying it's O N log N. I don't know. Okay, and then let's see what you sent here. Geometry series for real X nine equal to one summation that. Uh yeah, but we haven't. We have an N here. Oh, that's fine, it's just times a constant. Oh, actually, M is a constant to all this. Yeah, yeah, that's what we did. That's exactly what we did here, okay. N is a constant to all this, so N comes out to the front. Then we have one plus da, 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 da.
Okay, I think ours might be a little different from the question I sent. I sent the question in the chat again. I think it, if this one has two parts, I don't know if that matters. It has T and N by four plus T N by two plus N squared.
Plus N squared, yeah. Um. Like, it doesn't really matter, because then the the cost of each row is still some expression with K in it. N squared, N squared instead of N. But no, it's it's pretty much the same thing.
You know the thing you do with the K, uh he never did that anywhere.
This here?
Yeah.
Uh but but he kind of did. He said that lo um. He said that uh, well, that's his upper bound, log N. He didn't write it here, is this it? Non recursive part, no, that's not it. I don't know what that means. His K is I, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so whatever he wrote at the top right corner, I think like. No, no, in the like the, yeah, yeah, this one. Over here, I think he's just trying to explain why we have just one in the first one like array, let's assume it's an array. One array, the very first row, and second row, we have three. He's just explaining.
Yeah.
The way we understand the design.
Yeah, and he's explaining how, like this part here is just explaining how we get N times three over two to the I. And then, oh, and then he says there's log N plus one of them. Ooh, there's log N plus one of them. Cause so he says the total number of rows is log N plus one. Log N plus one. Log N plus one, so. But then here he uses log N.
Did he just take log N? Cause if you look at the summary, it says row I contribution, three I times. N over two I, and then it just says row log N.
Yeah, which makes me think like the last row will have contribution. That's what I mean, it makes me think that's what he's saying, like that it's gonna be. Uh the contribution of the last row. Log N. But he does write, did he, did, is there a video of him writing this text, or is that just, did he just scribble that on?
Just.
He just put that on? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I see. Okay, that's fine, um so uh. Yeah. I don't know if I can, yeah, I don't, I don't know. This makes sense to me that it would have to have a log N in the exponent here. And then N log. Well, because that's that's the highest value of K. K will go up to log N. Right? K will go one, two, three. The log N, well, zero, one, two, three, up to log N.
Oh, wait, I'm looking at the slides for the master method and this seems like it. I think he says to. To compare it to a log function or something. Okay, I don't know, never mind.
Okay.
I don't understand anything on the slides.
It's alright, yeah, I understand. Um, okay, uh I think we're pretty close to cracking it here, but we didn't quite get it.
Wait, I think I see what he's doing. You see, it's three over two raised to K.
Yeah.
Like on the summation part, I think you just take the two K out. It's just three K and over two K.
Three to the K and over two to the K?
Yeah. Cause I, if you look at the slide, that's basically what he did in row three.
In in row. Here?
And over, no, no, down the in row I total contribution.
Okay.
Over two, that part, another, the bottom one.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
N over two K times three K. Which gives you three over.
Row I contribution and over two to the I.
Maybe I'm confusing things, I don't know.
Yeah, that's the contribution of row I. And then that's what we have here in the sum. And then, yeah, that's what, that's what I have in the sum here. That's how much like each row contributes. And then each one has a. Value of N attached to it, right? A value of N attached to it. And then the maximum this goes, log N times. So I guess maybe we have to assume. Like it would make sense to say, assume. N equals two to the, I need another variable, um. I, I guess, no, I was gonna get too confusing, cause he uses I, so uh M, M is some constant, okay? Um so then this is going to be. Uh N times one plus three over two plus three over two squared plus. Three over two to the three plus da, 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 plus three over two. Log base two of two to the M is just M, right? Uh and at this point, we can just say this whole thing's a const, no, is it constant? Yeah, we can just say this whole thing's a constant, because M is a constant. Yeah, we can just say this whole thing's a constant. Why didn't I replace this with two to the M, though? Let's just say I don't, but that would tell me that the whole thing is big O N. But that, is that what he's saying? No, it's this big O log N, N log, N log N, so.
I don't know, I just have this quick thing to say.
Yeah.
It's kind of confusing, cause the one we did in the lecture is O N squared. Like we know it's a geometric series, cause whatever's inside, there is a ratio.
Yeah.
It's exactly the same thing, like eventually it's gonna be five over sixteen and to 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 like uh log K. Um and same thing we have over here, we have the same idea. It's one plus three over two and then three over two squared, three over. Why, why don't we just have? Big O N.
Yeah, why do we, why don't we just say this?
Exactly.
Yeah, cause it's just all gonna be with the constants. Yeah, I, I kind of came to that conclusion just now, that if I just assume that n is a power of two, then this all, whole thing is just a constant, I mean, it's a constant anyways, but, like, yeah. But, um. I don't know, I have to see, I'd have to see the whole example on this one. What, maybe I'll find the, like, what lecture is this one from?
Lecture five.
Four, four, actually, recurrence.
Oh, no, it's lecture four, it's down at the bottom, but.
Okay, okay, no problem, no problem.
I'm sorry.
It's all good, it's all good. At the bottom, you said?
Like, at the bottom of the screenshot, lecture four, page fifty-four.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I see. So, yeah, he did, he did the same thing, but he did not consider, with, yeah, so without he did not consider in this case how many rows there will be. He just said, they'll all be n squared, so it's big, it's, it's theta n squared. But here, he's considering how many rows, I mean, he's saying how many rows there are here. But anyways, okay, so then, so then we can apply the same logic here. All of these are just gonna be some multiple of n. So no matter what, it doesn't matter how many of them there are, it's just, we're just gonna be adding up a bunch of multiples of n's. So the whole thing is going to be theta n, and there we go. We don't need to do all this business with this, and this, and the sum, and da, 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 da. Just, this whole thing will be just multiples of n, so it'll be big O n, or theta n. Okay, guys, let's try our last question, and then, uh, and then that'll be it for today. Let's try to use induction to prove this recurrence. Uh, I will, I will try what I can, and, uh, uh, feel free to jump in if I'm doing something wrong, uh, but yeah, this will be the last question for tonight. Unless there's a more interesting induction question, but I do, I do wanna do one good induction. Use induction to prove T n equals T n minus one plus n equals theta n squared, T one equals one. Okay, uh, prove once for O n squared, once for omega n squared. So let's do, uh, O n squared first. So using induction, we wanna show that T of n equals T n minus one plus one. Um, uh, we wanna show that T of n is greater, uh, big O means zero, less than, less than or equal to C n squared. That we wanna show this is true. So we wanna show that, okay, we wanna show this is true, that's what we're trying to prove. So, yeah, okay, so, base case. Base case, okay, T of one, right, T of one equals one, which is less than equal to C n squared for all c. Plus n, not plus one? Plus n, yes, you're right. Plus n, thank you. Okay, so, um, now we have our base case, which is true for all c. C E R, there you go. Yeah. Well, that's the E R, sorry, you C E N plus, whatever, it doesn't matter. True for all c, let's just say that, why overcomplicate? We have our base case, now I need my inductive inductive hypothesis. My inductive hypothesis is that T is, is that for n equal to k that T of n, or T of k, is less than equal to, uh, less than equal to C k squared, right? Do I say k now, or do I say n now? I don't, I don't know if it matters. Okay, I'm assuming this is true. That there exists some c that makes this true. So now I need to show that this is true for n equal to k plus one. Are we supposed to do mathematical induction once we get the actual equation in terms of n? Like, not as a recurrence formula? Um, yeah, I know what you mean. But we are already given the formula here, so we don't have to do any kind of checking of, like, we're given, we're given what the guess should be. We're given, like, we know, we're trying to show this is theta n squared. We don't have to make a guess for what the formula would be if it's given to us. Yeah, I know what you mean, uh, uh, in terms of n, but I think it's be- because they give it to us, we don't have to do that. So, we now need to show that it's true for n equal to k plus one, which means T, um, T of k plus one is less than equal to C k plus one squared. Okay, using this fact, let's first of all plug in k plus one to this, right? So this is going to be T k plus one minus one plus k plus one, less than equal to C k plus one squared. I just did that by just plugging into this formula, n equals k plus one. Right, so k plus one minus one, so this is just T, uh, T k plus k plus, we did the base case, T one equals one, which is definitely, which is definitely big O and squared. Less than equal to C k plus one squared. So at this point, I need to use this. I think I need to foil this, so let me do that first. T k plus k plus one, less than equal to C k squared plus two k, uh, whatever, two k plus one. No, I don't think I need to foil that, actually. Uh, did we do the base case? We had to do both big O and, and omega, like, the lower bound, yeah, but we do, we, it says prove once for O and prove once for omega, so I'm doing O O first. Um, I don't know if foiling that did anything. I need to replace TK with CK squared. Do I need to do that? I think I need to do that. What am I trying to show? I'm trying to show I'm trying to show that this is true. Trying to show that that's true. And I can use this fact.
Input, uh, your CK squared, like, you can say that TK plus k plus one is less than or equal to CK squared plus k plus one, because you know that TK is less than or equal to. That's your hypothesis, right?
Yeah, I, I, so, okay, so you're saying TK plus k plus one is less than equal to CK squared? Which is
Uh, plus k, but you still have to, yeah, the other stuff.
Oh, plus k plus one.
Can replace TK with your, um, hypothesis. And then you'll see that you end up canceling out CK squared, cause you'll have
K plus one.
On one side and the other side.
So why did I not distribute the k? Oh, yeah, okay, so, uh, that's not what we're doing. Yeah, yeah, I see what you, I see what you're saying, so we, like just, just from this, adding k plus one to both sides, right, we get this. But the thing is, I have a C multiplying.
No, no, they're, they're diff, the, those two Cs, I don't know if they're exactly the same. Like, is it, I don't think they're technically the same constant.
But, yeah, yeah. Yeah, they're not the same constant. They're not the same constant.
I know, they can't, they can be the same constant, cause it's a upper bound, like, it can just be, it could, any number that's, it could be a number that's bigger than both. If you could be, put a C in there, so it's, that, it'll be larger if it's T TK or TK plus one. Like, it, it could be the same constant.
Oh, okay, yeah. Uh, can we just replace what we found in the deductive hypothesis into the, into the TK in the deductive step? And so it would be CK squared plus k plus one, less than equal to this. So, I can't just replace it, I don't think, because CK squared is bigger. So I'm putting this here would make this side larger, larger than this side, I don't know.
Proving an upper bound, right? So as long as you prove that your upper bound is still larger than the maximum of TK. Like, TK can at most be equal to CK squared, that's the ma- most it can be equal to. So if you can prove that, that your other, this other part is larger, is still larger than, than that, then it must also be larger than TK.
Yeah. Here, I have, actually, I have an idea quickly, TK plus k plus one, less than equal to CK squared plus two k plus one. Uh, and then TK no, 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 that was not gonna help anything. I thought maybe I could replace, I didn't multiply the C in. I thought maybe I could put this here somehow, to say that TK plus
Here, I, I, I sort of, I tried to solve for, for c here.
Yeah.
Oh, that equation on the right, no, no, that, that's fine, actually, but you have two, plus two k plus one, wouldn't there be C multiplied to both of those? So let's just say we've replaced TK with CK squared. Um, so we can write that on the left side, so we'd have C CK squared plus k plus one is less than or equal to CK squared plus two KC plus, uh, would that be two C? Not one, I guess it'd be one, yeah. Um, and now the CK squareds would cancel out, right? Like, we can say that they're the same constant, I think, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Okay, that's sure, let's just say.
We can. Um, so if k plus one is less than or equal to two CK plus C. Uh, and that, I believe you could prove with, um, either making, you could, you could pull C, uh, like, you could pull C out of the right side and have like, k plus one over two k plus one, and show that that's like some number, or you could, you could say that that would always be less than one.
But how is this showing, how is this showing that this is true?
All, you, we just need to s- show that there's a constant number that we can put in front of k plus one. That would make, or, like, if we can find a constant that we can put in front of k plus one squared, that will always be larger than, um. So we have to find the, we have to find the number.
In terms of, in terms of k?
No, no, okay, go, just, go, go back down. Um, so, let's say we divide the left side by two k plus one. So we have k plus one divided by two k plus one. By inspection, that's less than one, right? That has to be less than one.
Yeah, cause the denominator is bigger.
Dominator is bigger, so we know that C has to be greater than one, so you could, you could technically say that uh, k plus one over two k plus one is less than or equal to one, which is less than or equal to C.
This is this is smaller than one, so I, like, I don't know how to, k plus one over two k plus one is less than equal to one.
Yeah, it ha- we know it has to be smaller or equal to one. Which means, if that, if, so the biggest number that k plus one over two k plus one can be, is one.
Yeah.
So any number, if we picked C to be a number bigger than one.
Yeah.
It will be, it'll be larger than our
Then this will be true if we choose a C value greater than one?
Uh, yeah, I think you could just plug that in to check it if you'd want, but that should be correct.
But I don't even know how to, I don't even know how to check it, how, like
You just pick, just, 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 you can just try like a number that, it's not your base case, and see if it still holds.
But, like, like, okay, I, let's say I'm choosing two, so T TK plus one, less than equal to two k plus one squared. So what, oh, and now plug this into here, so say this is, where are we? So say that TK, um, plus k plus one, less than equal to two k plus one squared, TK is, no, that doesn't help us, though. How do I show this is true now?
I mean, so, um, so we know, basically, this is like, we have a bunch of less than or equal tos in this scenario. We start with TK plus one, right, and we could re, we can rewrite TK plus one in terms of TK and some extra terms. Um, now we can, we know that TK has a, remember, we're just trying to find the, the, the upper, the upper bound, the upper bound is, is big O, it doesn't have to be, um, like, it, it's, it just has to be bigger than whatever TK is, right? That, that's the rule. This isn't like, I don't know whether they called it small O, which is like guaranteed bigger at all, at all points. This is just big, big O. So we know that the, by our hypothesis, okay, the absolute largest value that TK can have is CK squared.
Yeah.
So, um, if we can prove that whatever, whatever value we, what, if we can prove that the right side is bigger than CK squared plus k plus one, it must also be bigger than TK plus k plus one.
Um, and the biggest value this can have is k squared, so we replace it with CK squared, so we replace it with CK squared.
So imagine if you took TK plus k plus one, you'd put that to the left of the CK squared plus k plus one, and you'd have another less than or equals two in between them, cause that's, that's what we're saying. We're saying TK plus k plus one, that has to be less than or equal to CK squared plus k plus one. Cause CK squared's the most that TK can be, we're just substituting that for the largest possible.
Okay, and then we wanna show this is true for some c, that there exists some c where this is true. Where this, where this is true here, and so that's the process we're going through here.
Find that C just has to be a number larger than the fraction that we know is, is, has to be
Okay, so, so since, since we can choose C equals two in this case, right, then since we can choose a value that makes this true, uh, yeah, this true, and we use the inductive hypothesis, then that's the proof by induction, then there we go. There exists, there exists some c. And that, so that, that's the end then.
I, yeah, that's, I think that's the actual answer to this question, dude, it should be C is greater than or equal to one.
We find the answer here. Okay, let me, let me write down what he does for omega, because he actually goes into detail for omega. He doesn't go into detail for the other one, so for, he just says similarly to omega, so let's just do omega quickly. TN equals TN minus one plus n is omega n. Okay, so he doesn't check the base case, whatever, base case is true. Um, he says, inductive hypothesis, TN is, is greater than CN squared for some constant c. Then he says TN is equal to TN minus one plus n, which is the thing. Okay, which is greater than equal to C n minus one squared plus n. Um, why C n minus one squared plus n? Cause TN minus one, okay, so the biggest value that TN minus one can have is CK squared. So k is n minus one, plus n. So, no, 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 sorry, the smallest value, the smallest value that TN can have. So, okay, so, which, which just means that C So, okay, so, whi- which just means that C N minus one squared less than equal to T. And minus one, so the smallest value is this, so we put that there, cause this is the, cause. C N minus one squared is the smallest value that TN minus one can have, that's our hypothesis. Right, so we substitute in our inductive hypothesis into what we're trying to show. Oh, we, we, I didn't even look at what we're trying to show yet. Okay, I didn't look at what we're trying to show, but, whatever, so then TN minus one plus N, less than equal to. CN squared minus two CN plus C plus N, plus N. Okay, and. This. Is. This is bigger than C, let's say C two N squared, right? Uh, big, bigger than CN squared, right, if. 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 Negative two CN. Plus C plus N is greater than equal to one, or is zero. Right, if this whole thing is bigger than zero, then this, this will be bigger than CN squared. And this is true when, and we solve for C, yeah, this is true if I just factor the C, so it's gonna be N. One minus two C plus C greater than equal to zero, so this is true. When N greater than zero, and then, uh, one minus two C. Uh, greater than. Greater than, greater than zero. So this is one greater than two C, and one half less than, gr- greater than C, so C is gr- less than a half. This is what he's, I'm pretty much just reading off of his thing here, so he's saying that, he's saying that, okay. To recap, and this proves it's true, because we can find a C value that satisfies this. CN squared less than TN, which means CN minus one squared is less than TN minus one. Right? So taking our induct, taking our definition and applying our. Inductive hypothesis, which means that, you know, the biggest, the smallest value that TN minus one can have. Is C N minus one squared, so I'm gonna replace that with this and say inequality, I'm gonna foil this. Case, this side's the same, and say that this is bigger than CN squared, if this condition holds. We can use that condition to find the condition on C. Right? Um, and so, the fact that we could find a condition on C meant that. The, the, it, it, the, the, it held, the proof held, whatever. And there's that. There we have, there we have our somewhat solution to the question. Honestly, guys, it's, it's getting pretty late, it's eleven o'clock, I say we should get some rest and try again tomorrow. I will definitely be doing a lot of practice tomorrow, so, uh, I might also be. I, I might also be in, in person tomorrow, I haven't really decided if I'm going downtown tomorrow or not, but I may go downtown tomorrow, so. If, uh. I don't know, if anyone wants to, you know, say hi, maybe we can probably, I, I can do some practice in person, uh, you know, we can see. Uh, but, uh, that would be interesting, and, whatever, anyways, I'll do practice tomorrow, and. I don't know, just, uh, cause I, I like to study the, the SLC sometimes, so, there's no lectures, yeah, I have no lecture. Well, I have my math lecture in the morning, but that's, yeah, SLC's closed, okay, but, yeah, yeah, but. I mean, whatever, other buildings do, right, live, went to library today, library was nice. That was pretty good, library was cold, very cold, uh, but library was nice. Edge building is very nice.
Is the power back on, the buildings?
Not at the SLC.
Wait. So all the other buildings have power, but the SLC?
I think every other one, except the SLC.
Damn.
It's okay, there's lots of other buildings to go to, right, so. Okay, guys, well, I'm gonna wrap up for today, it's getting late, I don't know if we're gonna make too much more.